It's a good event.
It's fine. It really is well-known.
Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Wednesday, July 19th council meeting. We have one, two, three, four first readings. And our first reading is Resolution Number 23R58. Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open the Finance Committee meeting at six o'clock with all members present. And our first resolution is 23R58, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase a police cruiser from McCandless Ford and declaring an emergency. And this is at a price of $46,814. And this is part of the regular rotation that we go through our few years to replace our vehicles, to keep them in good working order. We also have our second resolution, and we'll just kind of talk about them together. This is Resolution 23R59, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase a police vehicle from Van De Beer Chevrolet and declaring an emergency. And this is for, to replace a vehicle that was totaled, a 2023 Chevrolet at a cost of And there's insurance reimbursement for direct vehicle, an amount of $12,7955. So, McCandless dealership out of Pennsylvania, does nothing in Ohio available?
No. Last year we bought two from Montrose Ford, and we had one on the order again this year. It's not looking like that's going to be fulfilled early, is that they just don't know. So, we started looking around through Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and this is the only one we could find. So, they decided, they agreed to hold it for us, and they gave us the state pricing for $46, so that's, that's why we decided to go with that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and it is the Ohio state pricing that they're honoring, which, you know, obviously they will have to, and with these vehicles being in short supply, very good of them doing it. Now, this is for regular rotation. And then we have the one that we're replacing for a total vehicle.
Correct. That's our detective's car. It was, it hit a deer on Vanderhoof about a month ago, and it was still wrapped.
Okay.
It was a 2013 Equinox that got totaled.
Right. Okay. So, just looking back, back at some of our things, what we purchased here in the past, and a couple of things confused me and jump out at me. So, as you mentioned, we had to deal with Montrose. They were unable to fulfill it, so we had a resolution in September to take that vehicle out of the resolution from, from April. And the one that we took out was for the replacement, a replacement vehicle, the one that we removed. And that price was with trade-ins for that vehicle. Do we have those, still have those trade-ins, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure which one you're speaking of. There was, last year we planned on trading in two of the four Torses.
Right. Well, they were listed as two SUVs, and one was in April of Resolution 22R19, two SUVs, one was a replacement, one was a rotation vehicle. And then, in September, as you mentioned, we took off the one that was a replacement vehicle with Resolution 22R53. And that's the one that was listed on the resolution as the price with trade-ins.
Last year, we didn't, we didn't trade any cars in last year. We have, we have the two we bought from Montrose. The third resolution was the one that got totaled, the total cruiser last year, car forty-three.
Right.
But that's one we never got replaced.
Okay. So, I was just curious, because we had that in there, that there were trade-ins involved in period, so do we still have those trade-ins if they're used at any point?
We still do. We do want to trade it in. There was some concern about getting to Pennsylvania, if it makes that far.
Okay. All right. The other thing that kind of stood out to me, and obviously I'm, I'm not involved in your business, so I, you know, it could be just, just the way it is, but it kind of stood out to me that since 2021, we've had to, we've had, I believe, four vehicles totaled that we've had to replace. To me, again, I'm not in your business, I'm not criticizing, I'm just, it just kind of stood out to me. It seems like a lot of vehicles for our small community and our, our small force, does that seem excessive to you, or is it just, I mean, you hit a deer, obviously, you have no real control over that, but?
Yeah, I agree. Three of the accidents were not, the officer's fault, and one was, one, the officer was hit head-on by a truck driver, and the other two accidents were deer. Then one was the officer turned the car to somebody. So, it's unusual, it's not, it's not the norm. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a pattern, I think it's just, you know, it's been a bad run of luck, about two years, but I don't think it's.
If I can interject, one thing that is really happening in the industry, anything on the road, is that everything's getting totaled because of an airbag deploy, the electronic systems, the crash avoidance systems are so expensive and so difficult to repair that basically a small vehicle totaled a car.
Yeah, and that's the case with this, the most recent one, the detective car, the airbag that came on, it wasn't deployed, but you just, I guess when that comes on, it's, it's such an expensive fix that they use it, they, you know, and that's.
Okay.
And that vehicle had 98,000 miles on it, so it was due to be rotated on anybody.
It was due to be, not this year, but next year.
So, for that vehicle that we're replacing, it's totaled, we're really only paying $11,500 for any kind of cost of the trading on it. For the new vehicle, will we see anything on that for equipment, in it, to everything?
The new cruiser?
Yeah.
There will be some upfitting. It's, we have a lot that are already in-house from last year we purchased, some of the stuff we take off of the cruiser that was totaled last year, so it's not going to be inexpensive, that's good of you guys, it's not going to reach that level, but it's going to be a few thousand dollars.
Other questions, comments? Is there comfortable waving three on both?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just as a side note, would it be worth investing probably $20 per car to buy pairs of those stick-on deer whistles that have been proven really effective to let deer know there's a car coming, or just a little deal, it has a stick-on 3M pad, readily available everywhere, and they're really effective against letting deer know that you're coming?
Yeah, I don't know much about them.
Yeah, it's just a little, it's got a little flat pad, it has a 3M stick, double-sided adhesive thing on it, and you stick it either on the hood, or on the, even on the front bumper, or the grill, and the air going through is, it makes through, it makes a high pitch, not really audible to people, but the deer can hear it, and it tells them, hey, something's coming, and gets them out of the way. My dad had them on his vehicles up in Jamestown, New York, and their fire department believes everybody used them because they worked. They're going to search out the internet, they'll find them. They may go to, hey, instead of, we can keep the deer from being in the neighborhood.
Yeah, because we certainly don't want an officer hit in an accident. Other questions, comments? Okay, so we will ask to wave the three readings on Resolution 23R58 for the, the new cruiser, and we will ask to wave the three readings on Resolution 23R59 for the replacement car. Our next resolution then will be Resolution 23R60. Mr. Powell.
This is a resolution authorizing Franklin to purchase security equipment from Southeast Security and declaring an emergency. So, this is to secure the, basically monitor the fields over Sisler, the football court and all that stuff.
Yes.
I know when we purchased the AEGs, we were looking at some way to have those tied in to connectivity, so when they, the doors open, there's some wording. Can we piggy that, add into this system?
I don't know the answer to that. It sounds to me, based on my previous discussions with the people who know those things, they said yes, so it seemed like that called Chief Lester saying that that could be done.
I would think they could put a Wi-Fi on it.
Yeah, I don't want that.
Yeah. And it looks like NOVEX gave us $18,000 or a grant, so even though this thing's costing $27,018, $231 is being told by NOVEX, which leaves a cost to us of $9,500. Do we get, can we send a better bids, or is this professional service, or how we look at that?
Are you talking about the Southeast quote itself?
Yes.
We, you know, we only spoke to Southeast. We've had good experience with Southeast. They provide services for us in other areas, so we did not look beyond Southeast.
But we currently have stuff in their service.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so it keeps it.
Keeps it in-house, exactly.
If I may.
Sure.
Chief, you're asking for three cameras for Sisler, is that enough?
The three cameras will give us coverage from Nemecilla all the way back to the soccer fields. These are good cameras, they're 360 cameras. They won't get behind where middle school is, because the pole will be there. They have some night vision capability. We're not going to replace with these cameras, but we'll be able to see the cars back there, dispatch will be able to see the cars back there after hours, to let our officers know. So, I think it is enough to know that someone's back there, we'll be able to see a person on the course, if they're back there, you know, after hours messing around with the course.
Okay.
As far as being able to see, identify a face, or re-replace, no, but we'll have coverage from Nemecilla all the way back to the soccer field.
All right. Well, I just wanted to make sure that it would be enough.
Yeah, I think so.
Trying to save a little money when we could, you know, spend more if we need more down the road.
Yeah, for what we're trying to do is just monitor the park, dispatch, and through what, you know, our station here, seeing what's going on there, I think that'd be good.
Excellent.
Is there, is there any motion alarm or anything that can be set up so that at two o'clock in the morning, there was activity back there, that dispatch could be passively notified?
No, not on these, not that I know of. I know that at our dispatch center, all of our cameras in the city are in a big monitor right on the wall, so it does require the dispatcher to, to be looking at the monitor.
So, the dispatcher happens to be looking at them.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to miss, I mean, like, there are stations here, and the monitor's really right here, and they can see the thing, so, but nothing, no alert, any, no kind of noise that would be made when they're.
But it looks like the way this system's being put together, it's easily expandable.
Yeah, yeah.
So, whether there are options down the road, if you want to expand it, put a, what they call bullet camera, and if we license places, stuff that could be done after.
So, that would be a good idea, too.
Okay.
All right, everybody okay, we have them three.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Our next resolution is 23R621. Mr. Daniels.
I got the easiest one. Resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district and declaring this an emergency. This is just a general routine transfer as the police levy was allowed to expire when the income tax is put on, so, not that we didn't transfer funds prior to that, but that's just another one of the reasons that we have to do this on a regular basis. Any questions, comments, concerns? With three.
All right, thank you. And that will conclude the Finance Committee meeting at 6:14.
I'd like to open the regular scheduled City of New Franklin council meeting at 6:15 on Wednesday, July 19th. Does everybody would stand for the pledge?
Yes.
I'd like to read this.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell me, do you have a roll call for?
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of June 21st.
Second.
Do we have a roll call coming?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
I'm staying.
Mr. Powell?
I'm staying.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask for approval of the financials for June 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anybody in the public that has anything they would like to say, or any questions they have? You can speak now. Nobody, no question. We will do our first reading, Resolution Number 23R58.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase a police cruiser from McCandless Ford and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to wave the three readings on Resolution 23R58.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 23R58.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution Number 23R59.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase a police vehicle from Van De Beer Chevrolet and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to wave the three readings on Resolution 23R59.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 23R59.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution Number 23R60.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to purchase security equipment from Southeast Security and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, and I move to wave the three readings. Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Oh, Mr. Betterman's not on this.
Yeah, that's an old one.
We missed him.
You had to remind us. We need to.
Wrong attempt. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 23R60.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution Number 23R61.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Finance Committee, and I ask to wave the three readings of Resolution 23R61.
Second.
You have a first and a second?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Make a motion to wave, or to adopt Resolution 23R61. Second.
You have a first and a second coming?
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no second or third pending with this session, so we go to our favorite part of the meeting, the short prayers report.
Yeah, favorite time, the short prayers report. Okay, first of all, I will be asking, I am asking for a motion to approve the auction of a 2002 F450 Ford dump truck from the Service Department. Again, this is, the truck's 20 years old, the mileage is around $67,000. We're having some decent success with auctioning these, and by prior Resolution 22R44, anything, any item we believe has a value in excess of $1,000 requires council's approval, but that approval can be waived, waived motion as opposed to a resolution. So, I'd ask for a motion authorizing the auction sale of that truck. So, moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Tell me, it was a motion to approve.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay. And then Mr. Stock was the second, thank you.
Would you do a roll call for?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and I will, for purpose of brevity, get two of these items combined into one. We're working on, as you folks know, zoning code revisions, and they're coming along this fine, good progress. There was a meeting last Thursday, there's another one coming up next Thursday, and there's a public hearing scheduled on the, the first three articles. In any event, we had polled our, our planning and zoning commission members before we reached this point, and let them know that they were going to be a lot busier than they had been, and wanted to ask them to kind of search their hearts, souls, and calendars, and see if they have the time to be involved to this extent. And we heard from two that, that we're not for different reasons, there's health, and there's pressing business, and so Dick Lowry and Doug Holloway have both tendered their resignation from planning and zoning. We have candidates to fill those two spots, and I'm making the appointment subject to your approval. First would be Mark Kohheiser, this is a balance of Richard Lowry's term, it runs through December 31st of this year. And Mark is, I think, well-known, he's been in the community forever, worked in the zoning department for a number of years, and certainly has qualifications, and has been sitting in as an alternate, so he would move up to the, to the balance of Mr. Lowry's term. The second recommendation for the term of Doug Holloway, which expires December 31st of 2027, is Mary Stormer. Mary has lived out here quite a while, you may know her, she was a supervisor in the Akron Municipal Clerk of Courts under Jim Laria, Traffic Parking Criminal Divisions from 2004 to 2022. She had licensed realtor for 20 years, so she has that background as well, and she has pretty extensive board experience as well. She served on the, as a board member of the Akron Public Schools from 1998 to 2005, and actually was a chair at one time. So, she's bright, capable, lives over on Red Slade Drive, is just a woman on the board, so I'm recommending her for that term to fill that Doug Holloway's term through December 31st of 2027. And then by moving Mr. Kohheiser up, the alternates position is open, and I'm recommending, asking for the appointment of Terry Prossess. And Terry, as you know, has been active in a lot of our endeavors up here. She also has a background that fits, worked with weights and measures, and then was in the permanent inspectors department of the City of Akron. Tell me if I mess this up, but she reviewed site plans for right-of-way construction, did inspection work as well, and works in weights and measures, so she has pretty extensive experience as well. So, those are the three appointments I would ask, that I'm recommending, I ask the council's approval, and I believe we can do it collectively if you're comfortable with that. How long is that one? That's just for one year, so the alternate stays for a year. It's always just a year, and then what was Lowry's, how much, how long was it? He's only through the rest of this year as well. So, I just need a motion.
I, I move to accept the denominations. And I'd also like to say that I know that we need to make this happen pretty quickly, because we've got a lot of things going on, on, on this board, but I'd also like to ask if, as, as we move forward and, and seats open up, whether they're as scheduled or for other reasons, that we consider posting these board opportunities to see who's in a community that might have interest, that isn't aware that these openings are coming up, and that may have skill sets that would really fit for whatever board it is.
I think that's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
I was just going to say the same thing.
Yeah, you know, and, and you're correct, and, and part of it, the time is a little bit tight. I didn't want to be anticipatory, I didn't promise anything to anybody, but we did talk to those individuals, and all of them attended the meeting on the 27th. They were all given the materials on the revisions, they were given the old code, they were given the diagnostic report, and they were given the, the first three articles, and they showed up, and, so they're ready to hit the ground.
They're all going to do a good job.
Oh, yeah, they're good people, yeah, but good point. You know, and I think it's really sort of indicative of what's going on in the community, because there was a time, it was like, gosh, can we find somebody to do this?
Right.
And now we have people stepping forward that have an interest, that's a good thing.
So, if these things are, two of the terms with the alternate, and then the, the other one expired within a year, will those be put out for public interest? I know you've got people already slotted in there, but it's still nice to see if there's interest in other.
Yeah, I'd have to think, I'll have to think about that, and you as well, but generally, what, what happens is we get a sense of how these people are doing. Are they engaged? Are they showing up? You know, and if they're doing a good job, I don't know about that one, Mr. Powell, I'd have to think about that.
And I think Joe made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have first and a second, Kelly, would you do a roll call for?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
All right. The oil spill, we did not get calls on the oil spill, that was surprising, because they did, they didn't reach my desk, and you may not be aware of it, but there was an oil spill, overbarment, and it got some press. We talked with the EPA, actually, we got one call, and it was a gentleman, it was a good question, he owns property adjacent to the tusk here in New Franklin, and the beams, I think, go all the way down to center, the, this thing that floats that they put in the water to, to contain. So, we spoke with Ohio EPA, and we confirmed with a gentleman by the name of Ron Fodo from Ohio EPA, and he's been involved in overseeing the entire remediation process. Ohio EPA has determined, in their professional opinion, that no water wells within the City of New Franklin have been impacted. The area in question is located almost 100% on property owned by PPG. Ohio EPA is not going to be involved in testing any water wells, private owners certainly can do that, but there's no reason for alarm there, and it looks like that's not going to impact us. We will be later in the year getting some, some legislation, I'll be presenting, to[1665.71] I'll be presenting to amend our income tax, uh, uh, legislation, uh, due to some changes that are included in House Bill 33, which is the state budget, uh, and they've enacted some provisions. Uh, we've been advised by Rita that municipalities are going to have to adopt some of these provisions by ordinance resolution. So when we get those, we'll be bringing those together. Um, I wanted to mention the State Rob 93 Sewer Project, which is, um, we've been talking about it a fairly long time. There's a map around here somewhere with it. Uh, with, uh, yeah, I think that's that one over there. Uh, in any event, uh, every time we take a deep breath, the cost goes up. Uh, the, uh, the county, I've had numerous meetings at a variety of levels, uh, and, uh, the county has actually looked at it now in three phases. The first phase, uh, would be the, uh, package plant on, uh, excuse me, the pump station on Vanderhoof. Uh, they've broken that. The second stage would be Vanderhoof east to 93 and then 93 down to Grace as Phase Two. Phase Three is the tie-in, is the conversion of the Zellray Package Plan to a pump station. Uh, we're looking at it in three phases and the county is right now as well because the price tag right now on Phase One of that is most recent cost estimates $10 and a half million. Uh, the, we have the $3 million in federal money that's dedicated to that. Uh, the county has, um, pledged $3 million, whether it's either going to be, uh, direct contribution or loans, but whatever. So that puts us at $6 million. And then the intention is to go to OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission, for the balance of that, which was a good plan when the number was a little bit lower. Uh, and it turns out that, uh, in our district, there's only about $11 and a half million total available for OPWC. So the, uh, the estimate, you know, the, the best estimate now is that probably our best shot is maybe for about $2 million from OPWC. Um, we have a meeting set up in about a, the OPWC application deadline is August 31st. Uh, and, uh, we have a meeting set up in the first week of August with, uh, some individuals from the OPWC board to, and, and some of the county folks as well, to get a, you know, an idea of, you know, will we get funding? How much funding will we get? Um, I will tell you that we've had further discussions in with some county, uh, in terms of whatever balance we may need. And, uh, I've been, I won't speak for them. I will just tell you that I have every reason to believe that, um, whatever it takes, those funds will be available to get that phase done. Uh, and we're, yeah, we're talking, you know, without assessment. Okay? The second phase now, the other $2 million, uh, we're going to, uh, be talking to, uh, the Ohio Builds, uh, Ohio Department of Development and the Ohio Builds Fund. There's $140 million there statewide. The capital, the, the state budget also earmarked $700 million for, uh, infrastructure projects. That's going to be available, um, after the first of the year. And, uh, we've made some, uh, good inroads down there already that those offices are aware of the project. They're aware of how important the project is. Uh, they're aware also of, you know, as far as the first phase of it, uh, the $3 million in federal money is floating around there. Uh, and we're also making aware that we've, they're, they're, they're getting some additional, um, estimates. There's a sense that this $16 million for Phase Three is way, way too high. So they're taking a hard look at that. We're going to be chasing that money as well because it really is the fourth phase is to get that sewer and water over to where the, uh, ODNR Visitor Center will be. And we, we believe that to be about a $3 million project, and it looks like we're in good shape to get about $2.5 million of that federal money. So, but that can't happen without the first three phases. Uh, and, and the thought is that that's a pretty good scenario for us in terms of scrambling up the funding for those phases so that at the tail end of things, we don't lose the $2.5 million in federal money. And by the way, we tried, we put a Visitor Center down there at the State Park. It's going to be really important. So I will keep you posted. Each step away. When it's time for lobbying, I'll, you know, I will enlist you. Uh, and, uh, we're, I'm still, uh, fully optimistic that, that this is going to happen. Um, so the timeline's on this. If it's OPWC money, that money's not available until the following year. So we're probably talking, and, and I feel, I still feel very confident about this, that, um, that the funds will be available by late, you know, by the late summer of next year. Uh, the bids will go out, hopefully the construction will start late fall, probably the spring of the following year, and we'll get the water, we'll get the sewer up here where the water is. So we're going to keep banging away at it. It's not the only place we're working, but that's the one that I think is probably most urgent. So, um, and we've got $3 million sitting around in federal money that we don't want to lose, and we won't.
So, so when you, when you talk about phases, is that, um, uh, different years that these could happen?
Or? Not necessarily.
Project size.
Yeah. Yeah, not necessarily. So I'm hopeful that Phase One and Two happens. You know, when this thing was promoted, what I've described is Phase One, Two, and Three, this, well, first of all, it's going to go all in the neighborhoods and then Aspen Shell. And then when they said, okay, we're going to put it up 93 and hit that corridor, uh, and the Zellray was part of that. So that was all one phase. Um, back then, we were talking $10 million for the whole thing. Uh, but that was, you know, five, six years ago. So, no, it, it doesn't have to be phased. It doesn't have to be sequential in that sense. It could happen all at the same, but most likely, what I'm hoping for is One and Two in this cycle. And then we would chase, you know, that, next year we'll be chasing the, you know, the Phase Three aspect of it.
When you break it into different phases like that, instead of like one phase that would encompass everything, you go to the, whatever organization it is, they give you money with it. You have them three different phases. You can go back to each different phase of the same organization so that it's additional funding. What's that, Rod, is your?
Thank you.
How much you get?
I, I'll, I'll bring this up, and I know nobody wants me to, but I'll bring it up anyway.
Just a different stop. You?
Yeah. Um, with this funding that may possibly be available for us, would it, would the funding still be available if we were to do something like some sort of bond or something to get this project done? Would, would we still be eligible for, for grants and funding that would help pay that off or down?
Uh, yeah, it could, it could all be part of it. It could be part of the project.
Because our final, our, our final, um, the final part of it is, is getting that State Park Visitor Center for it and getting, getting that there. And I, I just, I, I real, I understand what you're saying about the phases and size of projects. It doesn't necessarily differ years. But I'm thinking as prices continue to increase, the sooner we can get the project done, the better off everybody would be. Um, and if we can get started on it sooner than later and, you know, get it done, the whole thing, you know, is that even?
A lot of, like, EPA loans that revolve in loan for water and wastewater, once you start the project, you're eliminated from getting any money from. Because if you can pay for it, you don't need their help. So I'm assuming some of the other entities would be in that same situation.
Okay.
And, and, and I don't know what the county's, you know, if the county, if it turns out that, uh, the OPWC money isn't there, the county, you know, has to be creative in how they're going to create their funds. I think that that's the type of loans they're going to be looking to. Um, but I think the, the other, I, you know, I think, probably the short answer to your question is yes in terms of, you know, generally. Um, everything I'm talking about here though, we're, you know, I'm still, uh, counting on getting that money to other places.
Sure. Just for clarity, you know, it's, it's three phases versus the one. Uh, Phase One is the pump station and Vanderhoof?
Phase One?
It's just.
Yes, I'm, uh, it, it's, it's the pump station.
Okay.
All right. Uh, and then it'll run, and, and some of the extension of the line, uh, west on Vanderhoof. Phase Two would be going east on Vanderhoof to 93 and then down to Grace.
So, so one other thing, you know, we, we've all talked with the county and stuff, and they want a certain percentage of buy-in from residents along the pathway for them to do it. Uh, the folks on Vanderhoof really, you know, they're, they're a captured audience in this as far as if they don't buy into it, that kills the project. So they're almost going to be forced to have this run down through there. I know when you got the, the $3 million for the grant, it said there will be no assessments to the Vanderhoof folks. So I just want to make sure we're still on that same page and that folks in Vanderhoof will not see any cost other than tying in and their lateral stuff.
We are 100% still on that page.
All right.
I've had every assurance. So I, there's, I have no concerns in that regardless of it.
All right.
They raised it, and I've said no. And they said, okay. I said, hey, we got $3 million. You know, we brought $3 million.
Bringing some on.
Right.
Yeah. So that's our, you know, so, but, but that's the answer. And the more we emphasize that, the more people know that.
Right. I just want, because I just want to make sure it's said that way because if people start asking, we already got the answer for it.
Yeah. When, when we get to, and I'm, really, uh, I bought, and, and part of the good news is the whole package, the three phases we've talked about, and that fourth phase, the ODNR, is already sitting down at Ohio Department of Development in about a four-page brochure. Uh, so they know what we're trying to accomplish here.
They, they plan for Phase Four?
Well, when I say Phase Four, I'm talking about taking it over to ODNR.
Yeah, that's what I mean, getting.
So, you know, I, we gave, I gave them all of them. You know, I said, this is what we're trying to do here. Uh, and, uh, so they, it was previewed with them. Um, what, what the county is considering Phase Two to get it up 93, uh, that's really why the intention, hey, I'm, you know, knowing that's a thousand, you know, it may not work, but I, I'm optimistic that we'll be able to get that $2 million from Department of Development. Um, if we can't come up with that from any other source, that could go into a Phase Two and then, you know, they say, well, that'd be a great OPWC project for next cycle because it's only $2 million. There's a component to it that has to do with economic development. And, and so, you know, if you go in that direction, at that point, again, the question came up from the county, well, you know, you've got some businesses on there with, they'd be willing to, you know, what about some assessments for some of those businesses you know they wanted, et cetera? And I said, well, let's just see if we come up with the $2 million first. So that's for that phase of it. And, uh, I'm not planning on any assessments on any of this. Proposing that, I, I have no intention of proposing to council any of this phase that's been involved assessments. Um, so we've, we've had some conversations, done a little bit of lobbying, let's say, uh, and, and the, the argument was basically we've got some federal money here. We don't want to lose that federal money. So you use that leverage to say, we've got federal money with you and the state and the county help us make sure this gets done so we don't lose that, by the way. Um, when you, you said in Phase Four, you've got some federal money that's connected to that. Is that committed or just likely? Yeah, well, it's both. Well, it's, it's likely. It can't be committed yet. It was part of the 2024 appropriations.
Okay.
Um, that were, that, that had to be sponsored. We had to, um, um, present that, application for that, um, with our, with, uh, State Senator, or with Senator, uh, Sharon Brown, Representative Amelia Storm Sykes. Um, Senator Vance chose not to, not present any, um, appropriation requests. I really do not know why, but so we put some of it to him. Uh, and we were hopeful that one or the other of each two would include it in the ones that they were going to suggest, and both of them did. And so the people that know these things say that, you know, it's, you know, we're going to get it. Uh, but they, last year, they did come up with, uh, I think it was at the very end of the year. Uh, because that's where they set an appropriations committee, and they have to fight back and forth which ones are going to fund, which ones they aren't. But as a general rule, they usually fund, that's why they limit the number that can be presented, uh, for the representatives and as a bigger number for the senators. But for us, they have both of them. Uh, we have every reason to believe we're going to get that money.
Well, that's, that's all more weight to the lobbying argument to say, right, we've got federal money to do this. We're not assessing any neighborhoods. This is, this is a project that needs done for the benefit of.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like a, a pitch, but it's also real.
Correct.
I mean, because that Visitor Center will be a big deal to us. You know, the longer you look at New Franklin, you think that maybe our, our primary industry is recreation. Uh, and, uh, I mean, we've got 411 acre street park over there. We've got 110-mile Ohio River Canal way, trailway down there. Uh, you know, we've got fresh air and green grass. And, uh, that Visitor Center will bring people.
Yeah, that's right. We'll stop it off.
Yeah, right there. Well, they, it's a slow down. Anyway. All right. So it's a natural.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Uh, more like, heard Tudor House, Fourth of July was, uh, uh, well-attended. Um, we think we had probably a thousand people in and out of there. And, uh, just, I, I thought, oh, it was awesome. We had our volunteers did a great job. The venue was so beautiful. Uh, so, uh, that was a big success. Uh, music and movies last night was Top Gun. Uh, and I don't know, we had about 75 people down there and it was really, really neat. Um, the, uh, we have, uh, the next two Tuesdays. Uh, next Tuesday, we have music, and the following Tuesday, we have movies. And I can't tell you which one, we got three of those. I forget. But when you go on the website.
Men's is for the movie.
Men's is the movie? Okay. All right. And I can't remember who the music is, but, uh, we'll find out. It's on the website. Uh, the summer barbecue has been mentioned. Thursday, August 10th, $60, $600 for a table. The tickets really are going fast. Uh, we sold out last year to the tune of about 260. And we're trying to spread and put a few more tables in there and, uh, get it up to about 280. So, uh, please, uh, you, you find your tickets online. Uh, so go chase those tickets down. Um, Last Call for Dragon Boat was, not really Last Call for Dragon Boat, but, uh, we've had beautiful contributions. Uh, we're about $150 short. They'd like to have $1,400 for the application. Uh, so we'll come up with it. I've already had some people talk about what they might do, both here and elsewhere. And if we do better than that, I think there'd be a better cost. Um, the cancer, you know, the press cancer survivors and that's just such a fabulous event. So, uh, meanwhile, we need paddlers. Uh, and, uh, so talk to me if you're interested in paddling Dragon Boat. You better be serious because we're planning on that. Uh, right, Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We were playing around out there.
I mean, I had a great time doing it this year as well, but it was, it was a lot more effort exerted than I expected. And I mean, I did find that the kid, the guy that's sitting next to me.
Yeah.
He's a little warmed up, he's obviously a little swayed all the time, and we were both.
Oh, yeah, you're gassed. No, you're gassed by the time you get, yeah, yeah.
It was a great event, though.
Yeah.
And I think we would have gotten second had we gotten a third race in.
At least, second. Yes, I agree. Okay, so that's going to be, the barbecue is Thursday, August 10th, and you have two days to digest your food, the Dragon Boat race is Saturday, August 12th. All right, I think I already mentioned the zoning code revisions and the codification, and we're getting there, we're getting there on that. Really been a big dent, and I traded some documents with them today, and so we hope to have something on that, 30 days or so, probably. And I'm sorry, that was not very brief, but there's my, sorry, there was some good information.
It's so interesting, I didn't notice it wasn't brief. How was that? You finished that?
I am, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any news on the comprehensive plan committee report?
Absolutely.
We have a chair here, so go ahead.
I'll yield it forward to my colleagues to have anything to bring, then I'll follow up and quote it back.
Yeah, I'll just read something here. The last council meeting, when I came away from the last steering committee meeting that we had in person, I thought we were going to have a vote of the entire committee about whether or not to make the survey public at this point in time. We asked about it, that was going to happen, and the meeting minutes came back and said, well, the discussion ensued on the timing of putting the survey results in the public domain prior to the release of the committee's recommendations and final report. Several members were in favor of putting the information up immediately, while others expressed concern about survey results being taken out of context. For previous steering committee meetings, the survey results were waiting released to those who specifically request them, but not be publicized until the final report. So any member of the public, including ones who are asking me about it when I was out blanking signatures, I'm going to tell them, call Katie, she has it, if you want a copy, you can get it. And the survey report itself has just the results of the survey, graph and charted with no conclusions, no analysis or opinions. And it's about 45 pages long. And all of the content therein is was agreed to and approved by the steering committee as a whole, so. There you go.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else? Jack, do you have anything to?
I do not, other than, other than that, I think we're hopefully getting, getting to some finalization here soon.
Thank you, thank you. The volunteers that have come up for this committee for the last, first of all, getting in the council, yeah, and everyone else in the room. All the volunteers have done an amazing job, Mark Selfcommittee and his group were amazing in collecting that data. At the end of the day, all that information is going to be released, and the reason why we want to release it is because we don't believe in hidden secrets here. We put a lot of work into it, the committee is based on the citizens of our community, and we don't want to have any doubt in the public's mind or eye that we are fucking it out or changing it out. All that information had been designed to be part of the opinions of all of the information. The reason why we were wanting to slow the process down before we release the information is because we wanted it to be part of the conclusion, the recommendations. It will probably be on the city's website for anyone to have it here soon, anyone to have it and go through there. But our biggest concern is we just don't want folks to start making conclusions based on unfinished work. It's the same thing as when Grandma puts the apple pie in the oven and the kids are saying, we want to buy now, we want to finish the product, we want to have a complete product before we, you know, pull it out of the oven, and that's really what will go down. And no one is ever going to, especially in my committee, ever be denied information that we've done. Again, that's just citizens committees, a group of citizens that have been entrusted by you and the administration to create a document. Furthermore, changes are going to occur throughout the process. Ours recommendation becomes a council, council decides how they want to use that information. Again, if I'm looking at the US Constitution, I think there are amendments to the US Constitution, that first draft needed some amendments, and they've done that 23 different times. And again, we're not looking for perfect documents, we're looking for recommendations based on this current value of what we have in New Franklin. We still want to protect our community, we still want to protect our capital. Everything that we have is a value add, we just sit there, we're just talking about Project One through Four, stages one through Four, that's going to impact our community. All of that information is, will be part of the recommendation. If we have any projects that we want to do, it's always coming across. So again, at the end of the day, every document that we have will be available to the public, bottom line. Money gets released, it will be released, it's there, available, and as we move forward, we've had open meetings, we've had committee meetings, we've had comments for this, for the public to address at the end, we've had public engagement, we've had volunteers about this entire process, and we're not going to belittle any of that work, any of that effort. So as far as I know, we will put that information out, and it'll be available. Any questions?
And I probably should have jumped in a little bit sooner, but we have posted that, so you can find it now on the, on the webpage.
You'll say, Kate, you'll have work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary. Susan?
Just as previously noted, we are in our audit stage, they're actually coming in-house, and they don't stay here the whole time, they come kind of in and out. And just, they asked that I would remind you about the broad document that they sent you, that they want you to fill out, please get that back to them. That will, they have to have all that in before they can actually close out our audit. They are thinking that they should be done with their part of work maybe by the end of August, and then the report will be done in September, so it's out of the lot earlier than last year. So that's kind of the game plan they've been giving us, and we're still working on that, that's our major extra focus this, this month again, so.
That's about all we have? Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Do we get any old business?
I'm going to bring this up in old business, because it's, it is old and something that should have happened. Bethany McKinney had made a post on Facebook about safe harbor in our electric aggregation, NOPEC is just gas, right?
Correct, for us.
For us. I, I looked, I thought we were automatically enrolled in the county plan aggregation, is that the right word I used?
Aggregation, aggregation.
I thought we were automatically enrolled in that, turns out we weren't, and a lot of people found this month, the electric bill basically doubled. So you have to call, and unlike NOPEC, you don't get automatically entered, so a lot of people saw double their, their electric rates this month. Do we know, is it, is it supposed to be automatically put in?
No, I had trouble with gas one year, and it was some convoluted way that they do it, that if you don't get in, you have, if you don't get in, they put you automatically in a, a line, so it may be the same with electric, I'm not sure.
I haven't called, but I need to call because my rate.
And you're going to call safe harbor?
Yeah.
Okay, I will too.
Yeah, Bethany put a real nice post out, explained that a lot of people online were surprised.
Yeah. Actually, the post was on there a while back, when it came out, I'll have to look at my old, my old post, it's extremely confusing.
Yes.
We are part of the county aggregation, but there's opt-in, opt-out, and.
And if you're on a contract already.
Right.
Oh, and that happened to me on gas, and then the lady came in, I mentioned it to her, and it took us several weeks, me, not me, her, it took her several weeks to sort it out. So that's the reason I say sometimes it can be difficult.
As far as I know, the city of New Franklin is not part of the electric program, or part of the gas program.
City, the residents.
That's what I mean.
There's a county we can opt in.
Yeah, we can opt into the county, yeah.
Right. And the number that Bethany had posted up there is eight, yeah, 866-636-3749.
Eight six six, six three six.
Three seven four nine.
She said you needed your invoice, I think your, or your account number.
Account number.
Off of your Ohio Edison. Yeah, so you have your, have your Latin bill in front of you when you call. I was trying to put something together, too. Yeah, with your publication ID, because like I said, a lot of people, if you saw a random post, how come my electric bill doubled? You know, it's summer, it's hot.
And there's a website, apples, apples, that's it, that you can compare electric rates from all the different suppliers, so you can go through there, you can see what their rate is and what their contract is, and any penalties or added fees, it gives you all the information you need to make a good choice of who your electric supplier could be.
Thank you all, that was very interesting. Oh, did you have something to say, Mark?
I think you have something interject into the, about the aggregation programs like that, one thing to be aware of, if you had somebody come and sell you some solar on your house, and you're doing net metering, if you join an aggregation program, you won't be able to sell your power back to the utility company that you keep with, there's a lot of that there. I mentioned that to some people, but I've seen one more solar, and that's popping up.
Thank you, Mark. Very interesting. Anyone else? Do we have any new business?
Oh, that was great.
One of the things I've been working on since probably late winter, actually started last year working with Scout Troop 118 next door. Prior to 2020, their big fundraiser for the year was their pancake breakfast, and 2020 kind of put that on hiatus, and they haven't had one since. I've worked with them trying to get something going where they can have a pancake breakfast. They are going to have that this year on September 2nd, that's going to be at the church next door, there are going to be pre-sale tickets, I can reach out to them, they'll be more than happy to, to give you information on that. That same day, I talked with our police chief, fire chief, talked with Merrill, I talked with Katie, we're going to try to put together a toucher truck type event as well. There'll be two separate events coinciding about the same time. Police chief is, he's got some stuff lined up to have out there, our guys, stuff like that, it sounds like. Fire's going to have some of their equipment out there, I was going to see if we can get service to grant maybe a pile truck, a truck, a few things like that. It'll be a nice little event where, you know, you can bring the kids, and they can walk around, look at the trucks, talk to the guys that operate them or anything else. So we'll get more information out on that, it's going to be September 2nd, just want to make sure we kept that information up.
Yeah. Yeah, is there a flyer or a release?
That will work.
Give me a summary, okay. That's, we'll talk to that.
The 118 is doing their own fundraiser, that's a separate event on the church property. We'll do the toucher truck, which will be free to residents.
So they can actually do the breakfast, and they come with their toucher truck, right?
Yeah, so if people's going to come out, let's give them something, they'll come out and do it.
And kids love trucks. Uh, men love trucks.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I just thought, how many kids do we have sitting here? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir? Mark, did you have something to add?
Not to that, no.
Okay, okay, just something else.
Yeah, just a comment on something that came up during the meeting, because I think we're in the public sector here. I've been going to PCC meetings, I think they're doing a great job, Fred is just a phenomenal asset. He's doing a great job with the code, but one thing I think we should clarify and mention is the barrier at the last meeting, he thought was a good idea, and is going to put the documents up on the website, is that the issue of zoning and the large turnout we had for chickens and so forth is not part of this first portion of it. The first portion is basically three administrative sections of the code, they're doing a pretty good job of it, anybody wants to read it, come and make comments, but if by putting out ahead of time that this is just, you know, some dry code stuff, maybe we avoid having a whole bunch of people come in and ask you questions about, that it's not really part of the code that would affect those other issues.
You might avoid it, I don't think you know that you might.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're attending that and involved in that, he is, I was surprised when we sat down with him, I was surprised how knowledgeable, easy to talk to, it was a good, we have heard good sessions with him, so I'm glad you got a similar.
Great sense of humor. Any other comments? Does anyone else have anything? And I think we have need for an executive session tonight.
Yes, for appointment of a public official.
Yes, for appointment of a public official. Our next meeting will be August 7th, 2023, we'll adjourn to.
We have to take a vote, we have to take a vote.
Will we still make a motion to adjourn to executive session? That would suck.
To discuss appointment, to discuss appointment of a public official, that has to be part of the motion.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.